Side conversations going on here this morning already. We would like to welcome everybody to the Wednesday meeting in our February State Board of Education meeting. We've got some folks here today. I'd like to have introduced themselves. We have some members from KELI, which is our organization who mentors new superintendents. And we've got a few new superintendents. So if you all would come forward, just introduce yourself and say what district you are, what your district is, that'd be great. We'd like to recognize you and appreciate you being here today.
Go into the mic.
Yep, go to the mic, you bet.
Oh, Tony Helfrich, superintendent in Pratt.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Sherri Nicholson, superintendent at Hoyington.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Bill Anderson, USD 419 Canton-Galva.
Great.
And I'm Max Clark, superintendent at USD 331 Kingman-Norwich.
Okay, well, welcome, and we're glad you're here today. We know you've got a lot of important work to do, and we appreciate you spending part of the day here with us today. I think you'll find our conversation today very interesting. So we also have a couple folks here from KBOR that will be joining us today when we have our discussion here in a little while with qualified admissions, so we're glad to have you here today. Okay, we're going to move to the agenda and Wednesday's agenda. We have a rather full agenda for a half-day-plus, but any additions or changes to the agenda, if not, I'd take a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve from Mr. McNeese and a second from Mr. Jones. On favor, please raise your hand. And there's Dina. Okay, all right. Dina came in behind us, Peggy. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we will move to our first agenda item for today, which is discuss changes in qualified admission and the impact on high school graduation requirements. And Brad Newen Swanger is here to lead us through this conversation. So, welcome, Brad.
Well, thank you. So this morning, we don't know how much time this conversation will require, but we wanted to have enough time to let the board really think about moving forward, what, if any, affects qualified admissions or changes that the Board of Regents is looking at. But at the same time, we also wanted to share with you, there's more to this than just qualified admissions. So we're going to kind of walk through some of this and then kind of lead into then the action item later on about computer science recommendations and what the board might want to do with recommendation number three, which was that computer science should count as a core requirement. So we want to, we just want to be able to have some conversations about that. In addition to the Board of Regents, we invited them to come over in case you had questions in the weeds that I didn't want to make up responses to. So we had them come over to be able to answer any questions. Their role is just to make sure that anything that you may have in detail, they'd be able to answer. They're not here to really present anything, just to be able to provide a service. We also have some people from the department. First of all, I'm not sure if you've ever been introduced to, so I might have Mike and David come up real quick, just so you know who they are. So David Fernkoff is an assistant director on Scott Smith's team over standards, over graduation, over virtual, over, we just keep adding. And Mike Pounds is new, they both came on this summer, but Mike Pounds oversees everything from graduation to, you know, he's on David's team, so anything else that I'm missing on... They've been a great addition, and they've hit the ground running. So when we talk about graduation requirements or any of that, all of that is really on Scott Smith's team involving David and Mike. So they may be up here answering some questions. So thank you guys, sit back down. All right. So you have, you've been given two different things. One's just a copy of the PowerPoint, but the other is some more detailed. We don't want to get into the detail, but you can look at some more detailed about what we're going to share. First of all, the qualified admissions, this goes away with the class, this junior year class. So next year's seniors will not be under qualified admissions requirements. So it takes effect, you know, timeline, they still have some work to do, but really qualified admissions is for admissions into post-secondary, basically that's it. The details of, if you look at, and there's more details in your handout of, you know, four approved units in English, three approved units in math, those go away. It is replaced with the new admissions requirements. So instead of Board of Regents saying, "We really want to look at these math courses that you have to take, these English Language Arts, these Science," for Emporia State, Pittsburgh, Fort Hayes, and WSU, they're looking at ACT or a GPA. Now, they have a pre-college curriculum units that they recommend, which pretty much align with the board requirements, but they're not required. They're really looking at the GPA and the ACT. And as normal, and I don't think this is a change, if you're taking concurrent or college courses while in high school, they will accept those as long as you have a 2.0 in that course while you took it in high school. And I don't think that that is a change. K-State is a 21 or a GPA of 3.25, and then KU has a little bit more stringent. So that's what they're really going to focus on for admissions and doing away with really looking at course sequence or the qualified admissions requirements. But there's more to a student being accepted in post-secondary than, or being admitted than just qualified admissions. They also have the scholars curriculum, which is still there. So if you're a student that wants to qualify for a Kansas Scholars, $1,000 a year for up to five years, as long as you're still, you still have to meet these requirements, whether it's at KU, K-State, so that is still a requirement. There are local INREGs, local board requirements, which basically what it's saying is, "The state board requires 21 credits," and we're going to look at that here in a minute. But a local board can add to that. They have the authority to say, "Well, to graduate from Pittsburgh High School, we require 26 credits." So school districts and boards can add, as long as the minimum is the 21 credits that the state board sets, the local board can add credits. So Randy, you look like you want to...
Well, I just want to also add, Brad and I may some go back and forth a little bit, because we want you to understand the breadth of this. So let's just say I'm going to go to KU, and I'm going to major in engineering. There's the requirements to get into KU. There's then the requirements to get into the College of Engineering, and those can be more stringent than to get into the university. And we're not going over all those, because all those vary, but you need to know that too, especially when we come to individual plans of study. This is where it all kind of comes together, because there are lots of these things Brad's going to go over, and you, at the end, at the end of this, you may be going, "Wow, there's so many things, I don't, how am I going to keep track of all this?" But that happens to kids all the time. Well, oh, I'm going to KU, but I can't get in the College of Architecture because I didn't score high.
Right, and I think, you know, when you think about qualified admissions, it's exactly that. What did, what was the qualifications just to be admitted to a university? Just to be able to say, "All right, we'll admit you to come," but depending if you're going into, like Randy said, something specific like engineering or pharmacy, then it just goes, it goes up from there. And the Board of Regents is just saying, you know, "This, this is the minimum to get admitted," but mostly, and I don't want to speak on behalf of Board of Regents, but they were, in our conversations, why are we getting so much into what courses they've taken, when if they're going into a program, it's typically going to be different or more than, when we really know that the kids that are having success are ones that have hit an ACT score and had a certain GPA? And they recommend courses, they don't, or units, they don't require it, because it really comes down to what we're going to talk about here in a minute, and that's the student's individual plan of study. There are other requirements that I think students have to take into consideration, and we've given you more detail. I think Mike even broke it down between Division One, Division Two, you know, but if a student's going to want to participate with NCAA, you know, again, we have so many different students on so many different course pathways that qualified admissions really just mirrors what the state board still requires.
And Brad, for the board to know, what challenges you on the sports side of this or the activities? So you could say college debate or college athlete. Oftentimes, they don't start to make that determination, "I'm going to go Division One, Division Two," till their junior, senior year, where they need to be planning for that well in advance, or the clearinghouse may catch them. And because, oh, all of a sudden, someone's recruiting me to go to Division One to run cross-country, I wasn't thinking about that, and ah, it's my junior year, and now I'm trying to plug into that. And so it becomes a little tricky as a parent when you don't know what the future, and you're having a conversation with an eighth grader or a freshman, and a parent says, which will happen all the time, "Well, we don't want to determine it now, no, but you don't want to shut doors either." And that's, this is, this is what makes the individual plan that Brad will talk about a little bit later so important and yet so hard as we work with parents.
And here in a few minutes, I'm going to turn the conversation over to the chair, but we just, because today wasn't about me presenting you a 54 slide deck on everything about, we really want you to be able to have some conversations. But I think this slide here, and you have the details, more detail than your handout, is, this is really what the state board requires, and it almost mirrors qualified admissions. Four units of English Language Arts, and you specify that it shall include reading, writing, literature, communication, and grammar. Now, that could come indifferent, but, and I would say, most districts align sequences and everything around qualified admissions, but it really still kind of mirrors what the state board has said, three units of history, government. It shall include world history, US history, and US government. Three units of science, which shall include physical, biological, earth and space concepts, including a laboratory course. And, and the recommendation is not right now, this actually kind of mirrors what you would see in qualified admissions, and you still have this in the KISA regs. Three units of math, including algebraic and geometric concepts. It does not say Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, your current regs, just say it shall include algebraic and geometric concepts. Physical ed, which shall include health, one unit of fine arts, and six elective courses. Those total up to 21 credits. And again, the regs do say that a local district can require more. I think where my kids have gone to school, it's 26, but they have ability to earn 32. But you're just setting the minimum of 21, and what at a minimum should be included once they enter that ninth-grade cohort.
Question? Can I ask a question?
Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does the local board have flexibility to decide, do they have much flexibility in what constitutes a single unit, whether it's time in class or whatever? Do they have much flexibility there?
Yes. All right, oh, go ahead, Randy. Yeah, Steve, so there's a minimum time, and so all of these are going to relate to accreditation. To be in a credit school, this is what you have to have. So it could be seat time, credit, or mastery of concepts as determined by the local board event. So whenever, and you'll hear us talk in redesign a lot, that if you're going to give a credit, let's say in world history for mastery of concept, we always say, you, we encourage you to do that for kids, because now you're on a flexible, time becomes flexible, not static. But you want, in our opinion, the world history teacher to validate that credit so that you don't get into someone saying, "Well, they didn't really earn it." And that would be at a local board level. So it can be a combination of how the local board measures that.
And, and when we visit with districts, I mean, it needs to be, the teacher of record needs to be the one that is licensed to issue that. And I'll give you just a quick example. I don't know if they still do this, but a district that I was familiar with that was doing this at one time was the welding teacher, and this was a Level III, Level IV welding. They weren't just welding hog panels and, you know, and fenders on the horse trailer, like that was my welding experience. They were using 3D graphic design to design, they were welding art, they were doing all of the competencies in Level III and IV welding. They would design it, they would send it to the laser cutter, you know, and it was art that they were creating. This teacher partnered with the fine arts teacher that taught pottery. And all of the competencies that she would, that a kid that finished a Level III pottery course is the same competencies that this kid was using, they were just using metal instead of clay. And when the kid completed satisfactorily this welding Level III, IV course, they were issued the welding credit, and that fine arts teacher also issued them a fine arts credit, even though the kid never stepped in that class, because she knew that they had met the same competencies, that they just used a different material, but she validated, and she was the teacher of record. So, I mean, those are just kind of examples. I think what drives it is, there's a law that says 1,116 hours must be provided. So we say that's equivalent to about 120 hours of seat time, but we also in the regs say, "But you can issue the credit at any time that the student can demonstrate that they've met the competencies." So that gives the flexibility of...
And I will say, as you think about this whole scope of thing we're going to talk about today, we don't have enough school districts taking advantage of that which is in the regs now. That's where the individual plan comes into, because it's hard when you start manipulating time. It's a, it's an easier organizational to run a bell schedule and have everyone on the same time. The problem with that, Michelle, we were talking before, is that some kids are advanced, and some kids are behind, and some kids are right there. So when you keep time constant, some kids get bored, some kids don't learn, and then some kids are at the right sweet spot. The problem you get into when you manipulate time, how do you run a schedule, Jim, for 600 kids in a high school? So those are the problems schools deal with and how to figure it out. But, but we've got some schools, you know, trying to do that in redesign, it's just, it's harder.
And we, so the teachers, you want to hold the kids to a set of standards. What are the standards and competencies? So when you hear districts like Wichita tackling, "We want the kid to, once they've demonstrated the competencies that are aligned to the standards for that course, and they go to more of a competency base that we don't move you on unless you've demonstrated the competencies," that's different than just saying, "I got a B, and that B was predominantly made of participation, I got my homework, regardless of it, I demonstrated that I knew the competencies, but I got the grade." And that's a shift, but that's what they're trying to do, is look at if a student can demonstrate the competencies.
Randy?
We have a couple more questions. Ann Ma?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Who sets the guidelines for the Kansas Scholars scholarships?
The Board of Regents.
Are you guys even thinking about reducing those as well? Okay. I think we just need to be clear that our graduation requirements, we can say they're kind of like the qualified admissions, but they are not the same, and you can take all of that and not be prepared for college.
Well, that's why this is a minimum, and that's why...
Yeah, but it's, that's what I'm saying, it's not really kind of like them, it's a minimum that isn't really like them. My concern is that they could take all our classes, our minimum list, and we'll be sending a ton more kids to college who are going to need remedial training than we are today, and we're already in trouble for that. So that's my concern.
But I'd also, I would also say, you could have met the qualified admissions and not be prepared to have success based on whether or not you've met the competencies within those...
Yeah, I mean, you might have slid through with a D, you know, but...
Yeah.
So is that ACT 21, you have to score that in both math and language arts? It's not an average, right?
I think it's a composite.
It's a composite?
It's a composite, so I could get like 28 in math and 15 in English and go? Oh, my gosh, okay.
But again, Ann, depending on what you're going into, if it's a math sciences field, that's going to catch you when you try to get into the college within that university.
I mean, they won't take a 15 in English.
They won't take it.
Right, because...
See, I don't, well, things have changed in 50 years. I don't remember having to have a particular ACT score to get in the College of Science that I went into. They just took me.
I think that was probably true, and I went through too.
Yeah.
That's much different. I'll look to the Board of Regents for that, but I think most of the colleges within the university have their own criteria for whatever that is.
I guess...
And remember, this is just admissions.
Right.
So I'm living this with a kid applying right now, that the 21 is just, "We admit you." But the 21 in many of these cases don't lead to any scholarship. You've got to have a 22 or, you know, but it's just, "We, we accept your, we approved your application to attend, but depending on what you're going into, we may or may not allow you to go into that program." You may have to choose a program that, I mean, if your highest composite was a 21, that may not qualify you for a lot of different programs within that university.
I mean, like, if they want to take, you know, dual credits in high school, we make them have at least that high to take English comp, don't we, for college credit?
But again, you have to have at least a 2.0 for them to accept that, but they may accept that as one of their 126 credits that they require to graduate from that institution, but they may not accept, "You took Algebra I concurrently through Cloud County." They may accept that as a credit towards your 126, but they may not accept that as a requirement. If you're in engineering at K-State, they may still require you to take their math sequence. Again, that's just accepting you into the university, but not into specific programs. Those may be, and in many cases, are a much higher requirement.
Ann, did you have another question?
No, I just think we're going to have to have a lot more qualified counselors if this is, if we're going to be changing this stuff, because they're going to have to know a whole lot of stuff they're not even thinking about today.
And that's why we believe this slide is the key to it all, because it should be personalized, and that's what the individual plan of study, in this board, several years ago, we now require through KISA that all students no later than eighth grade should have an individualized plan of study that involves the parent, career counseling, guidance, and yes, it can't totally be laid on the counselor. It's got to be who that student's mentor is, partnering with their parent or guardian and personalizing it, because every, again, this is just, "Am I admitted or not? But once I know I might be admitted, then what is it that I need to have in order to get into whatever program I want, which most likely could be higher?" And we need to have those conversations earlier on than their junior, senior year.
We have a couple more, at least one more on my list, if, I don't know if anybody... Okay, so Dina will be next, and then Michelle has a question, and I don't, Jim, Jim McNeese does. Okay, so Dina?
I'd like to go back to the units, and just to clarify, if we're talking a unit, we're talking the equivalent of a semester in, in that class.
I believe it's, a unit is a year.
Okay, I mean, a year.
Yeah.
So if they take a semester, then do they get a half-credit or a half-unit?
Typically.
Can they earn a half-unit?
Yes, they, you know, they're like, a lot of the required courses are a, like, if I'm a, if I'm taking Algebra I or geometry, that is a year-long, two, two-half units. Now...
So you put the two together, though, and you get, you get one, the one whole that, by doing that?
Correct.
But anyway, I just wanted to clarify whether...
For example...
They could do that, and I understand the competency base component as well.
So if a district offers seven periods a day, so that's over four years, that's 28 units that a kid, but they're going to earn those in half-units, and so it's not, even though it's fall and spring, I took seven units my freshman year, made up typically of half-units, or a lot of them are you enroll for that course for the whole year, and...
Okay. Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine's more of a comment. I have a sophomore, and last year, he was looking ahead at colleges, and most colleges do, like, he wants to do international business finance with a minor in Spanish. I mean, he's got that, that's his goal. He knows he's got to get between a 3.25 and a 3.50 to get into that business school. So I think luckily he's motivated, he doesn't really meet with his counselor that much, so he's, he's just on track to, with a mission in mind. So that, I think when they, when they're looking at different universities, you can go on there, and they'll tell you exactly. I mean, it isn't rocket science, you can go out there and find out exactly what grade point you need to maintain to even get into that business school. So I think it's, they may not have all the answers at the high school, but it's, it's out there with the internet. You can, you can definitely find out what your pathway is, and, and he's, he's on that, on track to do that, so...
And the, the sad thing is, not every student has a Michelle as a mom. Or, you know, I, you know, my son's going to Pitt State next year in construction management. Two years ago, we were looking at what course sequence, what are you going to be taking, what are the minimum requirements? We went and toured, and we went, you know, we, but a lot of his friends don't have, and that's, that's why this is so important. We have to have personalized... We have to have personalized for every student those types of conversations about what are your skills, what are your interests, what are your aptitudes? What are your, you know, your hopes, your dreams? And we got to start navigating that early on, because every kid, most kids wouldn't know that unless they had a parent that, let's sit down after dinner and start, you know? But that's, we believe that this is, you know, when the state board required this a few years ago, you know, again, qualified admissions was the minimum to even be admitted. And we, and we can't lower that. We've got to accelerate that depending on what a student's course pathway is based on what they want to do after graduation. And those are the conversations we need to have more of.
Anne, Jim McNeese said, question or comment?
We'll find out after I say it. Anne? You, you're right online about, you know, kids with a 21, 22 in the ACT, you know, and composite scores. But for those that are going on, we've talked about getting into a particular program like engineering. And this is for the Regents. Don't the different universities by department have options upon the student's arrival? That in mathematics, for instance, if you have a, you, you met the minimum by either credits or score, that you can then test them again, or you can decide that they're going to be in that remedial class. So if I get a 20 on the math test, but I get into Fort Hays or, you know, any one of them, or if I even have a 22, the math department might say to me, you know what? For us to place you in the right math class, we're going to give you an additional, our own personal test here at, you know, whatever state university. And then that decides what your starting math class is, whether that be remedial, or that be college algebra, or beyond.
Right.
Is that correct?
Particularly with an engineering-type major, because there's...
Well, any major.
Right, but it's, and even mathematics people are probably a little bit more, those folks a little bit more leery of scores and credits.
Right. It's, it's particularly an issue where there's going to be a higher math requirement, like a calculus or a trig, because if a student comes in, and let's say they're out of 21 or 22 in math, they're college-ready, but they may not be ready for calculus. So in many cases, there will be a secondary assessment that the institution will administer to determine their...
And those are, are, the, the individual universities and departments set those criteria.
They do, right. It's not something the board says.
So KU's different from Fort Hays, and Fort Hays from Pittsburgh, and some...
Right, it's a faculty-driven kind of review process in terms of the criteria and thresholds they establish.
So when folks, like, go into school, and one of the big complaints is we're not getting them ready, is that we might get them ready for the college admission, but we're not preparing them, or they're not prepared for their individual plan of study selection. So they're then faced with going into remedial class. So you could be in a remedial class for, like, engineering, but not a remedial class if you want to be an English major.
Well, I don't necessarily know if it would be remedial. It just mean, it would mean you would have to probably take that...
Well, we have to define a remedial, because there's a...
Non-credit bearing versus credit bearing, yeah.
Right, yes.
Right, because if you're going to go into, say, an arts and science-type major, you're typically only going to have to have one college mathematics course. Whereas if you're doing engineering, you're, you know, I think the expectation is you're going to be calculus-ready, but the reality is some students aren't, so there are going to be some additional kind of hidden prerequisite-type courses to get you to that level.
Non-credit bearing courses, or prep courses, or... Okay, that's good. Yeah, I'm just trying to, the universities are going further with this than just before we get them. And even if they get in, doesn't mean they're not going to be in a remedial class, you know, or could be, you know? All right?
Since, since you're up here, I'd like to clarify. Qualified admissions, the date that that's kind of started.
Right, so we're, we're currently going through the regulatory process here. If everything comes to fruition, we anticipate that this will take effect for those who are seeking admission for the 2021, 2022 academic year. So those who seek admission, summer '21 and beyond, that's when it will take effect. So in other words, class of '21. That'll be kind of the point of demarcation there in terms of high school graduating classes.
Okay, so that'll be basically the new requirements that you guys have.
Everything goes according to plan, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So Randy, I have a question for you. Student comes up and... Well, a, a, a district or a school, high school, sets a criteria that you have to pass Algebra I, and there is a course that you take, Algebra I. And at the end of this course, there's a final. That final is a year course final, covers the whole course. Okay, and that student, according to time, fails the class, but aces the final. Do they get the credit?
That is a local decision.
Okay, so I don't want to take algebra.
But they could.
Okay, I don't want to take algebra when I come in. The, the school wants, the, the district wants me to go to geometry, because I took algebra as an eighth grader. But as an eighth grader, I can't count algebra in my credits. Is that correct?
That's a local decision.
Well, no, I don't think that is.
No, it is. It was not under qualified admissions.
Yes.
But it's always been a local decision on how you count it on your transcript.
So as an incoming eighth grader, the district gives me a test, and it's a final for Algebra I. I pass it with a B or an A, or whatever the standard is. Can I get Algebra I credit?
Local decision.
Okay.
Again, it goes...
Most people don't know that.
So we do have districts that, I'm, I'm going to make this percent up, but let's say about 15% of your eighth graders are going to the high school and being taught Algebra I by a high school teacher. That happens all the time now. Once that student becomes a ninth grader, the regs say that you can issue credit based on the student demonstrating that they've met the competencies. Well, three months ago, they just demonstrated that they met it at the end of their eighth-grade year. You could issue them high school credit, I mean, put it on their high school transcript because they've demonstrated they've met the competencies, and they start in geometry or whatever. That's allowable right now, but it's a local decision of whether or not. And we have some districts say no, some districts say, but when you think, when you think about it, a kid that typically takes Algebra I in eighth grade, and they're looking at three credits for graduation, they're typically then going to take geometry, Algebra II, and then something. They're not going to stop taking math at the end of their sophomore year.
Really?
They're going to take college algebra. I mean, if they're planning on going on, but very seldomly do we, I, I'm never...
Well, let's, let's, let's deal with it. Here I am, a senior, and I messed around, pretty smart kid, and I, I'm short credits. Can I test out of those classes to get credits to graduate?
Yes, let me give you an example that you've had before you, where, where they do this, not test out. Mays Complete Alternative School, right? Someone in the audience knows well about that, because his wife started that. They mix credits all the time with competencies to accelerate kids that finally get, get back on track. And they're doing that, and they're making that judgments with the qualified teachers to do it. So that's a competency-based system in its entirety.
Yes, and what I'm alluding to is that there, there's a lot of different things they can do right now under the regulations right now. And, and for a lot of folks, they don't apply some of these things. They apply them in the beginning for accelerated students, and they use those opportunities at the end of their time when they're fighting for graduation credit.
Correct, and, and last year, we saw the, probably the most extreme of that with the young man from Ulysses.
Yes.
That started to accelerate that in the early middle school, and then he ends up with a baccalaureate from Harvard at the same time he graduates high school. And that high school, Ann Arbor, had to accommodate all that and figure that out in his individual plan.
And much of this flexibility is a local control issue. So they have the IPS control right now, whether they realize, understand, or appreciate that at this moment.
And it, in my opinion, it has to be at that level, because just as Michelle talked about her son, we need to get him ready for international business with a minor in foreign language. My son was, is an animator. That's a very different, and the, and Jeff West, if we're both going to Jeff West, they have to figure out how to do all that with the kid and the, and the parent. And that, you can't, and you see, all states doing this, you can't standardize then your, the requirements. If that makes sense.
But do we want to standardize the requirements? Because we need a foundation that all students should have at one time or another during their experience.
And you have that now?
Yes. Okay, you know...
Okay, on to the next slide, Brad. Nope, nope, nope. Individual plan of study, okay. I think it's critical, probably even more critical, that, to me, the way to run the individual plans of study should be driven by your parent-teacher conferences. That's a, to me, and that's just Kathy Bush's opinion, that is a perfect place to drive your work with your individual plan of study, especially in the secondary schools. You're already got, you've got folks there. You're talking about whether it's your son with you, whether it's my son who wanted to be an engineer, whatever it was. But you've got folks right there at that conference, and you can have that conversation. Because, yeah, there's not enough counselors in the world to thoroughly vet this, or not enough counselors in the state of Kansas, anyway, to thoroughly vet individual plan of study for each child. But there is already a structure of parent-teacher conferences where folks can come in, they can go through this. Now, maybe you need some support from the counselors for certain things, but it certainly is a way to drive these individual plans of studies, because you've got the parents. And, you know, for some parents, quite frankly, it might make those parent-teacher conferences a little more meaningful than, than what they're doing.
And that's why when you look on our website on individual plans of study, there's, there's several models that a district could choose. That, some districts hire IPS counselors that are, they call them career counselor or whatever. That's different than your, than your regular counselor that we, we typically, you know, have had for a long time. There's other districts that have adopted models to where every teacher gets trained in how to do these types of counseling involving parents and, you know, so it's... But the parent, guardian, community role in that is an important piece, but there are a lot of other pieces, because we don't have any model that it is just that one high school counselor doing it. It's, there's other models. You get to choose what's best fit for you in, in your, your district, but it's the process that a student should go through engaging at multiple levels, including the parents.
We have another question, Anne Mall?
My problem is the schools aren't doing individual plans of study, and we're hanging a lot on that. They're just not doing it. And if you want proof of that, walk into a high school and ask some of the kids, what's your individual plan of study? And see what they say, because every time I ask one, they look at me like, my what? And I went to, I mean, some are doing bang-up jobs, some are doing awesome. They make presentations, and you're like, God, I wish every kid could go to that school. But I've been to other presentations on ISP, like, at one of our conferences, and everybody in the room's just snickering like, yeah, we're doing that. So we're going to have to get a lot tougher in our accreditation reviews about that particular thing if we're going to hang a lot of this on the fact that kids out there have them, because they don't have them. And they're not being done with the parents. They're just not.
Well, and that's why I just made the statement that I made. Because I want folks to hear, to me, parent-teacher conferences is one of the ways, and a very critical way to drive this. And it's just like, you know, Kboard, you guys kind of took the leap of faith with qualified admissions. I would imagine that was a pretty healthy discussion with your group of folks. And, you know, so one of the things that we're talking about is how do we still prepare our students for the programs that they need post-secondary? And this isn't just our baccalaureate schools, because individual plans of studies can prepare a student to go to a welding program or wherever they go. But still, it's an opportunity, and do we need to get better? Yes, absolutely, we need to get better. And maybe for some folks, this will be a little bit of a wake-up call, because it has to be done. And it, with the flexibility they've actually had, but maybe they didn't realize, but this flexibility they've got, it becomes that much more critically important. And, you know, I know I've heard you at superintendent council meetings, and I'm sure it's, Brad talks about it at curriculum meetings, but it continues to have to be a conversation. And, you know, unfortunately, change in big institutions like what we have or Kboard isn't always quick. But we have to continue to push, which I think we're very willing to do. That's an editorial comment by me.
And, and the challenge, and that's, and that's what our schools going through redesign are challenging themselves. We have all the anecdotal, well, we had, we figured it out for this one kid, or we created this environment for this group of kids. But it's, how do we provide the flexibility and the personalized for all kids instead of the Braxton from Ulysses? Or we created an alternative program for this gr, you know? How do we provide that for all kids in a regular setting? And, oh, the bell just rang. So I'm sorry, we're delective, you know, and we move on to the next, and the next. And, and that's what our redesigned schools are trying to unravel, especially at the high school level, is that individual plan of study. I want to be able to move forward. Again, you, you've met him before, but he is now day three on the job. As our official recommendation number two was to hire a dedicated computer science consultant. We did that starting Monday, day three of the job, is Stephen King. That is now totally focused on moving the computer science recommendations forward, all the trainings across the state. You and I talking yesterday about all of the, the drive-in workshops, maybe a, a, a dedicated conference, so all of that. So Stephen King is also sitting back behind me to answer some specific questions. But recommendation number three was that it should count towards core graduation requirement. They did in detail say if we did, then we would recommend it be science. Again, if you back up to what the state board requires, three units of science, it shall include physical, biological, earthspace. But what if a student could meet those requirements in two courses? Then would we allow computer science to count as? So those are the kind of conversations. What course would it most likely replace? You know, those are things that we, the, the board might want to consider. What are the minimum course requirements that all students should take? Again, these are the ones in math and science. They didn't recommend math. Stephen might be able to explain, but they, they started out with, with, with science. But I'm going to leave that there, and Stephen is now close to me. If you have specific questions, because after this, you have an item to approve the computer science recommendations, and you may have some questions that Stephen might want to, Dr. King might want to answer, so... We're, we're open for dialogue and discussion and questions.
Well, I guess maybe I'd ask before we take questions that somebody talk a little bit about that little piece on there that's not at the bottom of our slide that was run off as far as the math and science, algebraic and geometric concepts, and then science, including physical, biological, and earthspace concepts, including one laboratory course, because that's not on our, oh, yes, it is, but still, I'm sorry. But I just think it would be helpful for somebody to talk a little bit about that. Okay, no volunteers.
You might share with them just what the committee's thoughts were, is why they thought...
Talk about why you recommended science and not math. As, as we look at the, I think you said 48 states, it's a very mixed, most, most other states, most, have three units of, three units of credit for science, three units of credit for math. There are some that have four, there are some... There are some that have four, there are some that have two, and there are some that have a waiver process. So maybe talk about why the recommendation for science and not mathematics.
Sure, we entered this, and one of the charges that I gave the committee was that, you know, on the one hand, we, we needed to pay attention to making sure at the end of the day, that every student was prepared for success post-secondary effort, whatever that meant to the student, whatever that meant through the individualized plan of study. No matter what, we needed to make sure the student remained prepared for success. If they were heading onto K-State, they needed sufficient academic preparation to succeed there. On the other side of the argument, and we gave credence to this side as well, I brought this map of the US. This is the states that count computer science, and I'm sorry, the verbiage they're using is making computer science count. And so on the side of business and industry, on the side of statewide chambers of commerce and so on, when they're trying to get businesses to move into a state, talking about future preparation for their workforce, when they're sharing a big blank space in Kansas, that becomes a topic of discussion. So the question then became, what does it count as? Should, how should we have it count? I did a survey, an informal survey at the curriculum leaders meeting statewide. And I got an interestingly very mixed response, where the responses were statistically insignificantly different between the option to not have it count at all or to have it count as a new separate requirement or to have it count as a math or a science. And these are the academic leaders responding to this. And so it was fascinating looking at the difference for that. So coming into the idea that how do we best prepare a student for their post-secondary efforts? How do we, understanding, and my own personal belief, I think the individualized plan of study should drive this. I would have to agree with, with Ms. Ma that it may not be driving it as much as it should. But, so, so how do we prepare the student for a world that, that the board ourselves, we know that that third item in this definition of a successful high school graduate graduate is technical preparation. So how do we prepare them for a world that needs technology, that needs a trained workforce that understands the computational thinking at a minimum? While still fitting it within a lot of these different discussions. Now, the, the standards were written from the standpoint of being able to be integrated into other classes. Which in some ways renders a graduation requirement a different topic, almost moot. They were, so, so at the end of the day, understanding that a certain amount of math is really a requirement for not just a lot of post-secondary effort, but also, and admissions into in the post-secondary institutions, but also just in regular life. And, and with a nod toward the fact that computational thinking is in many frameworks associated with the same cognitive ability as the scientific method. It was thought that it could be used as a science graduation requirement with more benefit to the student than potential loss of ability to succeed post-secondary.
Thank you, Stephen. We've got a couple of questions. Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What course, what computer science classes were you considering as being placed in the science area for credit?
The committee didn't get onto specifics on that. We probably should have. But I, I think the overall thought in the committee was that they should replace computer science, that the broader general courses should be the replacement. For example, the AP computer science exam. There are other courses called computer science that aren't taught at the AP rigor level, but still cover enough broad topics in computer science and still dive into the computational thinking, if you will. Some states have gone more specific topics like mobile application development and robotics. Because those unquestionably teach computational thinking skill sets. But I think that the general sense was specifically that they should be the broader computer science courses.
So would Microsoft credentialing or would Project Lead the Way?
Well, okay, so Project Lead the Way is a curriculum set, and they actually have within their umbrella.
You know, there's, it's a sequence of classes, but any one of those classes could. I'm just trying to see how, as a practitioner, I'm going to look at this. You know, if we pass this and say we want to do this, they'll need some leadership in terms of what courses could be available, and then licensure for those instructors who teach those. And that's a way, that's down the road. So if we approve this and pass this, there's, there's a lot of work to do. It's not just going to happen next week or next year. You'll be bringing back recommendations to us.
I will, yes.
I support this. I think it's long overdue. You know, I'm just, I'm concerned too that we have we don't have a very high regard, I think, at least at the individual level, on science education. There is a lot of, I'll just take vaccines. You know, the, the understanding of biology, you know, and what, how that happens. And that, it's kind of frightening that people believe some things. We've even got people believing a flat earth out there right now. I mean, how great is that? You know, I'm surprised I haven't fallen off. No, it's really scary, you know, in terms of this. And so it concerns me that we're going to move into science, but I don't know where else we can move into. You know, and it is there. So I support this. I think it's long overdue, but we have a bigger challenge of putting science and reality together in our schools as well.
Ann Ma.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, being a former physics teacher, this really scares me because the, putting this in as science and then only having three science, not telling them they have to take chemistry or physics means I think there's less chance they're going to know what vaccinations are, why they're important than, than that they're going to understand it more. And so I think it's really important we say, it can't be just any computer science class counts as something. In fact, if what they mostly learn is computational skills, why wouldn't that be a math credit? So I don't know, it really, really concerns me. Thank you.
Question I have, Stephen. The current standards that we just recently adopted, are they such that they can direct a class, so to speak, to be created that would cover this graduation requirement?
I think yes. I think classes already exist. For example, the, the, the new AP exam for computer science really dives into the thinking process behind computational thinking. And it's mostly built around the framework for computational thinking. With a little bit of, you actually submit a portfolio in whatever language you decide. So it's no longer just a Java test or a Python test. It's a, it's a true, can you think this way? Can you deal with abstractions and algorithms? And so that sort of course already exists. I think, I don't have any question that I could, I could dive into our standards and create sort of a Kansas version of that.
Well, and I think that's, I agree with Jim. I think one thing I'd want to see is that then you and maybe your committee will get back together and kind of really take a look at what are the standards that would be required in this particular course that would then count as a graduation credit and bring that back to the board. I think that's something, I mean, probably this isn't going to happen next year. So we'd have a little bit of time, but that, that would then come back to the board as far as what the recommendation is. The other thing I think we've got to think about is, let's say we have a student who goes through, I mean, we just approved the consent item for the Microsoft. And if we have a kid that goes through all that coursework, which I think is probably quite a bit, I don't know. I mean, wouldn't that qualify instead of taking, having to take an additional specific course? Don't they have the knowledge from all that series that could qualify for a graduation requirement? I guess I think we need a little bit of that flexibility. And that goes a little bit back to that competency base that we talked about with, you know, what we can currently do with graduation requirements. So that's just a little additional thought. Looks like Randy wants to say something. And then we've got, do have a couple more questions.
So I'm going to come back to Jim's comment, and I'm going to try to marry that with, Kathy said we ought to have the flexibility and kind of go to look at competency, and the answer is yes. Jim said, yeah, but, and Ann said, but not too many people are doing that. So if you have the money, I'm going to ask this as a question. The state board never dictates local curriculum. We have standards. But if you had the money and you were thinking about a curriculum as a non-endorsement, we're not endorsing, would not though, Project Lead the Way Computer Science, K through 12, generally meet the standards?
Absolutely, yes.
So that, to get to Jim, I could, if I had the money, I could set my teachers through that training as a curriculum option, and I would have that then as an option. I could also, just give me the standards, I've got some really great teachers, we're going to validate that. Give me the, right? Anything, give me twenty.
And there are other options too as well. Code.org has a, has a competitive product to PLTW. There are some great curriculum options out there already.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is more how this operates at the local district. So if I'm looking as a local board, for example, would I be able to say the computer science could not replace biology, for example? But it could replace these particular courses? So is that kind of what you're thinking? Or I'm trying to find out if, if it's wide open and individual plans are going to drive the wagon, so to speak? Or or are we giving local districts the latitude to make decisions about which ones can be substituted?
Well, as Dr. King mentioned, we will have to, I mean, now the work begins. What would we consider an appropriate computer science course that could replace? I mean, we, we also need, need to involve our science community in this conversation. But I think one thing that the board is going to want to consider is, is this something that you're going to allow versus require? Because let's say, you know, if you, if you approve and say that computer science can be used as one of the three science courses, and you set the minimum of what all students, that at least it has to have physical, biological, or space, and then you say we will allow, and then let's say a district out there says, well, we could allow it, but locally, we also want to require, you know, chemistry or physics. They, you know, so the question is, are you going to say districts have to allow this? Or can they? I mean, that's, that's a difference of that now the local district still has some choice because now they can base it off the individual student and not the entire system. And they have that flexibility because, again, your requirements do not include chemistry, physics as a minimum. So if you say it can be allowed, now you're personalizing it for every kid because one student, based off their pathway and their career, career interest, may be good with physical, biological, or space and some, some computer science. But another kid, no, you are going to need a chemistry, a physics. So you allow the district to have some flexibility of whether or not do we allow it for individual kids or do we have to allow it, period? That takes away the personalized individual plan of study. If you, if you don't give the districts that flexibility. And I don't know if that's addressing exactly, but we will have to bring forward, well, then what course do we, what concepts and competencies would we say have to at least be at this rigor to be accepted as a replacement for a science?
Thank you, that helps me with the thought process.
Jean Clifford.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. At the university or college level, where is computer science generally found? Is it, is it more aligned with the science departments or the math departments?
It depends greatly. Some schools, like K-State, for example, is part of the engineering department. Some schools, it is still part of the math department. Several schools, Yale in particular, and a few others have actually made headlines by moving them out to be their own school, which is, is one of the trends at the post-secondary level, making computer science count by making it its own school. Where it has been put in the past is, it varies widely.
Well, thank you for the information, but that doesn't help at all with considering this. Thanks.
That's kind of the whatever answer, huh? Okay, Jim McNeese.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the recommendations of the Computer Science Implementation Task Force.
Do we have a second? Have a second by Janet Wall. Questions, comments, because I have a comment, I'm going to throw a wrench in the works. Ben Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we're going to have, we're going to go around on the, on the third recommendation, that which, which, which core requirement should it satisfy? Because if you go to math, you have math people in here saying, ah, no. You have the science people in here saying, no. You'll have the English people saying, no. Maybe the foreign language would be the only one, but it's not a core requirement to do a foreign language. But my concern will be the licensure endorsement. I think it'll be too constricting on schools instead of actually expanding it. And we want expansion of computer science. And I think with the licensing requirements, we're going to see the opposite over time. And I know we could pipe in, we could pipe in technology courses from whatever college or do online learning, but there's no replacement for a teacher in the classroom. And I know we do that, but that is my concern. And I'm just, I'm convinced that it's too, talking to superintendents, that is too restricting. And let's see where this shakes out and then come back in maybe three or four years down the line, and then do the licensure piece, say, okay, this is what it'll look like. Can we do micro-credentialing? So if it's a certificate-bearing program, then yes, they should be credentialed for that certificate-bearing program. So if it's Microsoft and stuff like that. So that's, I haven't quite decided if I'm voting. I'm supportive of the other three recommended, or the other four recommendations. It's that licensure piece, because I think it's going against what we're going after.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I was sworn in in January of 2013, I handed these cards out to my fellow board members. Says you don't have to attend a college of education to be a great teacher. And I've gotten a lot of pushback over the years, but I've sort of hung in there. I've even had people say I wasn't fit to be on this board. And I'm still here. And I got re-elected with that same mantra. Stand Up Blue Valley was against me. You know, I was, it was a picture of me shaking hands with Sam Brownback, and he's evil in the world of education. But I'm still here, and I'm still fighting. So I want to echo what Ben just said, and actually, everything that's been said here today, I'm with Jim and Ann on their concerns. But when it comes to teaching computers, which is something that just changes so quickly, we're not very good at preparing teachers to do really rapidly changing stuff. And I'm, I'm sitting here thinking of my, my best friend in high school, who went into the Air Force and was trained to repair the things that load the cards into the computer, IBM Hollerith codes, the punch cards. That's how I learned to code, was in FORTRAN. IBM Hollerith code. You know, you leave out one comma and you catch up on a month's worth of swearing in about two seconds. You don't have to go to teachers' college to be a great teacher. And if we acknowledge that. have to go to teachers' college to be a great teacher. And if we acknowledge that, we can have all sorts of flexibility. And for the record, I want teachers to be licensed. I want them to be competent. I want to know who's in the classroom. I'm, I'm not trying to fling the doors open and say, anybody can be a teacher. In fact, I do declare that what I advocate is the opposite of anybody can be a teacher. And the system we have now is anybody can be a teacher if they get the credentials. And it has to change. And we can, we can do this. We can get to the moon. We can have flexibility. We can have individualized plans of study. We can put kids first. We can actually do this. So am I in favor of computer science being taught? Absolutely. Am I against the proposal as it sits because of the licensure component? I am. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Jim McNeese?
Thank you. First of all, this is a starting point. It's not an ending point. We haven't even talked about funding yet. You know, so I think to Steve, responding to Steve, this is a starting point. And you might find more support for computer licensure endorsement that would be an alternative endorsement than an English teacher in this regard because of the, the ever-changing, you know, platform. You know, none of these, except for Stephen, will be implemented in the next week. Stephen, we're keeping you around. You know, so this is, this really gives direction to the, to the Department of Education here, that we want to see these things. Eventually, we will approve them. You know, we're just saying, go forth, bring us back the details of these plans, you know, so we can vet them out. You know, they're not there. And there's a lot of work yet to do. But it changes the course of where computer education is in our state. And quite frankly, it's, it's out there in all shapes, forms, and sizes. You know, from the very well-designed and accredited and credentialed to, you just want to find somebody who knows how to turn a computer on and keeps the kids happy as they learn it on their own. So this will provide structure and leadership, you know, and get our state focused on the future, which we are right now not focused on in computer science. Thank you.
Anne Mall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, I hope we vote on these individually, but, rather than as a group. But I wouldn't have a problem with it, anything they're doing out there probably right now is being elective. I just have a problem with it being either math or science without seeing more details on what that class looks like. And I share Ben's concern about licensure because if we approve number four, it says, everybody who's out there teaching something right now gets an endorsement for computer science, and they may be just teaching robotics. I'm not sure I call that computer science. So I'm wondering, when they wrote number one, teachers currently teaching computer science should be granted an endorsement, what do they mean by computer science? Because we, you've got, in our standards, we've got networking, we've got programming, we've got all kinds of stuff.
We went back and forth on the breadth of that, actually. I think we settled with the people teaching AP Computer Science, which does carry the AP credentialing with it.
Do we need to have that included in here rather than just computer science, which could be interpreted to mean anything that has a computer in it?
Yes, I think we could.
So really, I mean, until you know what the list of classes is, how do you know what it takes to teach it? And we haven't seen a list of classes yet. So that's my concern.
I support this. And right now, the motion is for this as a package, for these recommendations as a package. It is, that's how the motion is set. One of the things that I would like to talk a little bit about is the core, minimum core requirement for, as far as students are concerned. Because I'd like to, for us to think a little more broadly, I'd like for us to think about, in the area of math and science, about the possibility, I'll start with science since that's already been proposed. When you start thinking about, and again, we have just been able to kind of broaden our thinking on requirements as far as high school, really. Brad mentioned, and that was specifically in math, but it could be some others. You've got a lot of eighth graders that take Algebra I. And technically, that really could be counted as a, in certain circumstances, that can be counted as a graduation credit. You know, you have, when you look at way science is listed right now as physical, biological, earth and space concepts. You know, that could include, I mean, to me, in my mindset, that could include some of the concepts that maybe they took in eighth grade science class. Still, you know, just because they moved from eighth grade to ninth grade doesn't mean that that knowledge all, all of a sudden has to start over. They've got that knowledge. They've been taught. They've learned that knowledge. So I'd like to, for us to think a little more broadly when we think of these requirements. And I'd like for us to be able to say, science, which is physical, biological, earth-based concepts, including the laboratory requirement, but it could be a little more inclusive than what we're talking about as seat time in a high school. And the algebraic and geometric concepts, I'd like for us to think about, okay, are we, maybe we're talking about that the kids have the conceptual knowledge of Algebra I, geometry and Algebra II. They could have that by the, easily by the end of their sophomore year. And they still technically are considered to require to have another math requirement. So why couldn't math be included in this computer science requirement? So I'd like for us to think a little more broadly as far as how we might consider this computer science requirement. And I know you will bring us recommendations back. This is recommendation three, because right now it says, computer science should satisfy a core graduation requirement. So the specifics of that will come back to us, is the way I read this, that we're not necessarily voting on what that core graduation requirement could be, but that would come back to us as far as what specifics maybe are within that requirement. So I would like for us not to forego thinking about it being a possibility for math, because we've got a lot of kids that take that Algebra I in eighth grade. And maybe their third quote unquote, high school graduation math requirement is science because, I mean, is computer science because they've already taken all, they, they've taken their algebraic and geometric concepts by the time they finish their sophomore year. So I'd like for us to kind of think about that a little more broadly as we think about bringing graduation recommendation three back to us at a future time. Because I'm assuming these, as we think about, as Jim mentioned, except for number one, because we are, we've already got the dedicated computer science education position. So, but the others, I'm sure will come back to us with additional information. Maybe not all of them. I would think we'd have to vote on the licensure. I think we have to vote on the core graduation requirement. Funding, well, we don't do funding, so we'd probably have to request at other places. But, and then as far as encouraging all schools to offer computer science, again, I think there'd be information coming back to us there. So I see this as a framework for us to get started with some additional decisions to be made in the future and some concepts. Randy's leaning in. He may have a concept or a comment.
I think, Madam Chair, as I see it, you're, you're, you're at, you're asking just, just that. Can we, you're going to bring back each of these components, but the five recommendations are what you're, you're, computer science should satisfy a core graduation requirement. If the board passes that, then you have to still decide what that requirement's going to be. But you've said to school districts, we're going to count, we're going to create a licensure endorsement. Michelle, Susan, bring us back that. But we're going to create that. And you're going to have to advocate, Jim and Deana, for funding across the street or private public partnerships. I don't think it locks you in. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's the way I read the motion as, as in your agenda. So I think, just think about that as you place your vote one way or the other.
Yeah, because I think what this says is, this is the beginning. We've got more, lots more work to go. So I think it's saying, Stephen, you're going to be really busy.
Well, and Madam Chair, I think if you're saying, and we want something to go into effect, and I'm going to look at Brad, because this is going to affect Keith and other things. If you want this to be in effect for the freshman entering school in the fall of '20, then the work that has to be done on all these to bring back to you will have to be done this spring. I mean, it's not like it's going to set a long time. Otherwise, you're going to delay it till the fall of '21. Because you're, you're going to have to start with the freshman class coming in. So I, I mean, there, kind of gives you an idea of a timeframe.
But I do, Madam Chair, I agree that, to me, I, I think the key to the board is this. Because some states, if they count math as the third unit, instead of saying algebraic and geometric concepts, they basically just say, but two of those courses have to at a minimum be geometry and Algebra II. You know, so now it's, all right, that's a little more specific. So I, I think in your thoughts moving forward in response to what maybe the math or science community or, you know, this is, when you talk about the minimum requirements that the board you require, it would be, what would we then want as a minimum? Because in science, that's the minimum that you've set. Now, we have a lot of kids taking chemistry and physics because they're, they're moving on, based off what their individual pathway or what they want. But so it's not like I see this lessening anything. It's just, what would you at a minimum say, all right, if we allowed it to count as one, what do we at least add as a minimum? We want them to have knowledge in science, in math. Knowing that based on where they're going, that's just, that will build off on top of that minimum.
Anne Mall?
Thank you. I understand that we think this is just a starting point. But number four clearly says, we're going to vote to grandfather in everybody who's teaching something now and give them the licensure. So if we vote on, if we approve number four, we've just said, everybody who's out there gets their computer science license if they're teaching anything that looks like computer science. The other, the other thing is, on number three, I don't know why it couldn't be an elective, but I just want to make sure if we approve number three, we're going to see a specific course that we say, yeah, that satisfies, not just anything you want to offer. That's, is that?
When I think of that, I still go back to standards. You know, you have to have standards that are covered. And to me, yes, I think we should create a course, but if Project Lead the Way and a kid completes a Project Lead the Way, they've had probably that and more, what those standards would be required. So I can't see forcing a kid that's completed all of Project Lead the Way to take an additional computer science course to get a graduation requirement. I, I think there's some options personally.
You're thinking Project Lead the Way would be a science credit?
I hadn't said that. I said it could be a computer science credit.
But they want it to be either a science, math, or language credit. That's what number three says. It's going to be one of those three things. Not an elective. It's either going to be a math, science, or language credit.
Well, it satisfies that a third piece.
Well, that, I mean, that's clearly, it says, we're going to let computer science either do math, science, or language, not what you said. Not computer science.
I'm, I'm not going to get that far in the weeds right now.
But that, I, that's plain reading what it says.
But I'm still not, I'm, you know, I'm going to wait for them to bring a recommendation back.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say about the licensure endorsement, I don't think this grandfather's people in. That's not my understanding. My own daughter has gone, she teaches Project Lead the Way. She went to class last summer and took it, and she taught at this. But I don't think that grandfather's her in as far as a licensure for. We're going to have to look at the license and what they create before that's determined. At this point, I don't, I don't believe that's determined unless I'm misunderstanding this.
I think the group will have to bring recommendations on who we would grandfather, not just, and what would be, what type of courses they took, what kind of certification or trainings they had, that it wouldn't just be, we grandfather everybody. And I say mad minimum requirement. And I think that's part of the work that this group committee would have to work on.
Jean Clifford?
So it, it is possible, is there flexibility that the computer science could replace either a science or a math credit, or perhaps being elective for a student, so that, that it wasn't designated in one particular area?
It, it could, depending on what the board, right now, it is an elective. I mean, if, if, you know, Baldwin High School's teaching computer science, and it doesn't count towards a math or, or science, then it's one of their six electives. Or Baldwin High School probably has 26 credits, so they may have 12 electives. So, I mean, it's already counting as an elective. So you could either leave it that way or have it count as a core course. That would be the decision of the board. But right now, it's an elective.
Deana Horst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. These recommendations, that if we approve them or adopt them, we're not writing them in stone, are we? They can be changed. This is just moving us forward. So if we decide to add some specifics about the qualifications that a teacher who is teaching computer science at this moment, if we decide that that needs to be narrowed somewhat, we can do that without having individuals say, but you said.
I, as an option, I think the board could add language into this, that the board approves the, the recommendations, and I'm looking at Mark here, approves the recommendations as presented by the Computer Science Task Force to move forward with specifics to be brought back. So you're approving our agency to move these four forward to bring specifics back for final consideration on each one of them.
So do we need to amend?
Yeah, that'd need to be, that'd need to be amended. Mark's, Mark's jotting down something here, and I'll have him, we'll talk about that. But I do want to ask, Stephen, I want to ask one question. Currently, how many states allow computer science to either be a math or a science graduation requirement?
Specifically, math or a science?
Math or science or a combination of?
Okay, sorry. Forty-eight states allow computer science to count as a core graduation requirement in the, in a math or a science or a foreign language type of system. It varies widely between the states. And I, I probably turn to our Code.org representative who might know the, the exact number with any particular configuration of that. But, but there are two states now that don't, that, that only allow computer science as an elective. And Kansas?
And we're one of them?
Yes.
Okay, so 48 states?
Forty-eight states.
Okay. I wanted to make sure. Okay. Mark's still writing. Okay. The motion was made by Jim McNeese, if I'm not mistaken, and a second by Janet. Okay. We're writing here.
I always saw the motion.
I always saw the, a motion as a recommendation for future action. And I do see where, uh, folks could see that the recommendation was a defined result. It had to look like this. It had to, every teacher who's ever taught a computer science class has to teach. I didn't see it that way. I always expected we would come back with rules and regulations and criteria, you know, and boundaries on that, you know. Uh, but to those people who are out there who have, um, taught computer science, many times, as principals, we begged them to do it. Uh, and they don't stay in those positions unless they are capable and competent. Uh, there, in that group of students, they quickly learn whether the person is going to help them move on into that computer science area. And, and that why, varies widely. So I, I, I hear what Ann is saying, that it, that we should look at some, um, more specific statement about uh, what your task is to bring back recommendations for each one of these. You know, uh, rather than, these are, this is the ultimate plan, and now you go implement that. You know, I.
Madam Chair.
I, I would modify it as, as.
Yeah, I, I have something I'd like to propose here.
Okay.
Uh, it would read as you have already moved, and then it would say, and request further work to report back to the board for specifics on recommendations for approval and implementation.
I would accept that as a amended.
Okay, accept that as amended.
To the original motion.
And Janet, do you accept that as a second?
Yes.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, that the Kansas State Board of Education adopt the recommendations of computer, of the Computer Science Implementation Task Force, and request further work to report back to the board for specifics for recommendations, on recommendations, uh, for approval and implementation. Steve?
I believe I could support that.
Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of the recommendation as amended, please raise your hand. Okay, that's a ten-zero. Okay.
As a final example, is very similar to when the board approved the dyslexia recommendations. You approved the recommendations, but then that's when the work began, because you approved the example that all school districts shall screen. So all the work, then we bring back to you what type of a rubric, what type, you know, so that's what we will be doing, bringing back for your blessing specific to each one of these recommendations.
Okay, I'd like to just quickly, certainly thank the task force that worked on this, and I think several of the members are here. So we appreciate your work on this. I'd like to thank the department, particularly Stephen and Brad, and your work on this. And the heartfelt and thorough discussion that the board had on this. Um, obviously, we feel strongly about the computer science, getting it more intricately involved in our curriculum for our students to be better prepared for job opportunities. And I don't care if this is in Wichita, where I'm hometown, Kansas City area, or Hoxie, Kansas. Uh, computer science is important everywhere. And all you got to do is talk to all the folks who work remotely nowadays. You know that it is, uh, it is critically important for our children to have a more thorough understanding as we move forward, so they can be prepared for the future. So we're going to take a break, and, uh, we'll be back, uh, let's say at, uh, we'll take a fifteen-minute break. Thank you very much. Okay, we'd like to reconvene the morning meeting, and we're on Agenda Item Number Six, which starts on page one sixty-five, and we are looking at, this is an action item, and it's amendments to the KISA regulations. Scott Gordon is here to go over this with us, and also to respond to any of our questions. So, Scott, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good morning. The only changes we made to the proposed amendments to the KISA regulations are highlighted on the page I have in front of you. It's on page one sixty-five. We just added a couple more categories of educators, which at a minimum should receive the dyslexia-focused training. We added paraprofessionals, and well, as well as the high-incident special education endorsement. I've not received, I don't know that the agency has received any other feedback from the field, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding what these changes would make to the KISA regulations.
My question on paraprofessionals, is it all paraprofessionals, or those that work with reading specifically?
The language is all paraprofessionals. We did not distinguish. Obviously, it's your discretion, but.
Yeah. I don't know, I just know you get in some districts, that's a lot of people that that may not particularly be in, I don't know. Jim, you want to respond to that?
No, I want to, I want to ask a question. Now, we, we have never, we have never identified or required specific training, so it can be differentiated based on need, right?
Uh, there's nothing that would prevent it from being differentiated training, that's correct.
So those that, uh, that have nothing to do with people with dyslexia could very well have a fifteen-minute session. Uh, on, these are the things you need to look for in case your students are having these sorts of problems, where those that are dealing uh, with a reading specialist would have significance. Because we, the, the task force specifically did not put any sort of stipulation, because we wanted it to be individualized and differentiated based on where people were. So I didn't, I, we haven't had a discussion about paraprofessionals, I don't think, but I would certainly think that that would be consistent with the rest of our recommendations.
Okay, that's a helpful clarification for me. Thank you very much.
And for what it's worth, on the page of, bottom of page one ninety-nine, which I have shown, thrown up there for you, on four, it says, at a minimum, the dyslexia-centered professional development shall be developed to all paraprofessionals, as well as to staff for those endorsements. So as it's written, it does specifically say all paras. Uh, but as Mr. Porter pointed out, I think that the school districts would have a great deal of leniency and latitude in the amount of training.
So as we give guidance to that, the guidance we would give would be basically, as Mr. Porter said?
I would believe so, yes.
Okay. I see Jeanette kind of nodding her head back there, too. Okay, all right. Michelle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as far as a local school district, like a local school board, they could have their paraprofessionals come forward, have a meeting, and say, we're going to, we're going to focus on dyslexia training. Who wants to come forward and, and, they have that option, right? They have that leeway to, to pick out which ones would maybe be better at doing something like that and come forward. They don't have to train them all. They can, they, that local school board has the ability to bring those paraprofessionals within their district forward and figure out which ones are going to train and move forward. It doesn't have to mean all of them, correct?
Strictly reading the regulation, if I'm reading it, and I wrote it, um, well, withheld, sorry. It says all paras. If you don't want it to be all paraprofessionals, then that should be adjusted. Now, the extent to which the districts are held accountable, and, you know, how they are checked on exactly every single paraprofessional, that's largely at your discretion. So if the, if the agency determines, okay, all paraprofessionals really does not mean every single para, that's kind of a compliance issue.
So they can, the paraprofessionals can opt out of that?
That would be up to the local district, I think, and, and.
It wouldn't be up to the para.
No, it wouldn't be up to the para.
Hmm, okay.
Would be up to the district.
It'd be up to the district.
But as Jim, Jim said, the training, so, you know, and I think the, the example he gave is a good one. You know, they, because all paras are brought together and had training. And as part of their training, they might be given fifteen minutes' worth of this what, this is what it would look like if there was a student who you were working with, because for the most part, they're all working with students. I know very few that don't.
Right.
But, so this is what it would look like if the student was having trouble versus those paras who, they actually have reading groups that they work with, so they would need more extensive. So that's kind of the way I, and heard Jim's, uh, explanation to me, that I, that I'm comfortable with. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll have to just circle back around to that particular school district.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Jim Porter?
I move that Kansas State Board of Education authorized the Kansas State Department of Education to continue the formal adoption process of the proposed amendments to the Kansas Educational Systems Accredited Regulations.
Okay, we've had a motion. Do we have a second? Deana Horst, any further questions or comments? Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor. Um, just looking at ninety-one dash thirty-one dash forty, that says it was effective July one, two thousand five, is that still what we're going by?
Uh, if you wouldn't mind, help me what page you're looking at.
Oh, no, no, I, I'm, I'm on the web, and I'm, I'm looking elsewhere. So I'm just wondering if, if we have changed this since July of two thousand five. And if that's not a fair question, I apologize, Counselor.
I can tell you, KISA did not exist as of two thousand five.
Okay.
So I, I, again, I apologize, I don't know what exactly you're looking at.
Well, it was just, we had a reference to ninety-one thirty-one forty, and so that's just what I tried to search for. I thought it had some really nice language that was pretty robust on what our, um, responsibilities and opportunities are with respect to accreditation, and its, and its revocation. So I just didn't know if it was still appropriate. Says it was, uh,
Oh.
Authorized by and implementing Article Six, Section Two A of the Kansas Constitution, effective July first, two thousand five.
What I'll tell you is, that effective date is going to change. The last time that the, that particular regulation or error, any of these particular regulations were updated, was two thousand five.
Okay.
So.
But that language would hold the ninety-one thirty-one forty? Would it?
Sorry, I have to scroll to see, make sure I'm looking at the right. One of the regulations is actually being revoked, and I don't think it's forty. So it's thirty-nine, oh, you're referring to the sanctions?
Yes.
As of two thousand five, the language you see here that has a line drawn through it, that's what went into effect as of two thousand five. The language that is underlined is what is going to go in effect effective whenever it gets formally adopted by the state board.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the KISA regulations. Any further questions? If not, let's take a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Looks like a ten-zero to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, our next item is to receive the history government social studies curriculum standards, and you received a handout. And Dawn is here, and if you, when you looked at the history government standards and clicked on that little link on your computer, it took you to about two hundred and fifty pages' worth of standards. I have to admit, I didn't read every single one, but I, I made a good attempt to, uh, read a couple of the grade levels at elementary, and at least one at middle, and one at, at the high school level. So I did make an attempt to read that much, and so, uh, a little bit different format. I appreciate the format. Uh, and, uh, actually, because this is a receive item, um, I guess maybe Dawn, I might, because this is, to me, this is a little different way to look at the standards. And, uh, I might actually request next month, when you come back, to act on this, that you actually bring somebody that might talk about how they would go through the planning process to teach their lesson, using the new standards, or maybe you could do that.
No, I, uh, we have a practitioner with us here today, so we'll be able to work that. Um, happy snowy, uh, morning, um, to you. I woke up in Jenks, Oklahoma, this morning, so, uh, I had a little bit of a commute to get here this morning. So, uh, um, that's cool. I want to remind you that February is Black History Month, and that we encourage our teachers to, uh, to bring attention to the heroes of, uh, of black history, um, in their classrooms during the month. Uh, we also encourage them to constantly integrate, um, black history, ethnic history, gender history into their regular course of, of instruction, as opposed to just having it in a particular month. So we're here today to, um, to, uh, give you a receive item on the proposed, uh, history government social studies standards. Um, our committee has worked now eighteen months on this process. Um, this is the group. I, uh, I want to champion, um, uh, Dr. Jeannie Disney of Manhattan-Augden, who was supposed to be with us here this morning, but she's in Manhattan. She didn't come over. Um, also Glenn Weeby, a co-chair, who is our social studies guy who worked at STAC, and who's actually been, um, in the social studies standards work for the past two iterations of the standards. And then finally, uh, we were lucky enough to have join us today Dr. Tina Ellsworth of Olathe Public Schools, and she's going to do the bulk of the presenting this morning. Um, but I do want to hit some of the big points, um, up front, myself. I really want to thank the people who served on the committee, because it was an amazing, amazing group of educators, and they really did a great job of pulling this all to, um, all together. So this is the, um, the purpose of social studies standards. That hasn't changed since our two thousand thirteen document. Um, our goal is to have informed, thoughtful, and engaged citizens. And, uh, we try to create standards that will encourage, um, that work to happen. So this is a new, this is a new infographic we've got in our document, um, to kind of spell out our mission. Um, so it talks about informed citizens who ask questions, acquire and organize information, construct their own knowledge. Um, thoughtful citizens, recognize bias in point of view, determine values of information, use multiple sources, recognize their own values and respect those of others, and then to be engaged citizens who vote, they public, they attend public meetings, they desire to improve their communities, they believe that they can make a difference. Um, they share their skills through actions, and they participate in civil discourse with everyone. So we want to get that out in front of teachers, so that they can see, this is the goal that your social studies instruction is trying to attain. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Tina Ellsworth. Tina, um, has worked with us, uh, for quite a while now. Uh, she was a member of the Kansas, uh, excuse me, the Missouri Council of the Social Studies, um, before she came over to the Kansas side. And she works very closely with us on, uh, on the work that we've, we've done uh, on this document. So I'll turn it over to Tina.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much for letting me come here today. It's such an honor, and I'm really excited to brag on the work that the committee did over the past eighteen months. Consider it a great honor that I get to share these updates with you. So, um, on this first slide, one of the things that we wanted to highlight is how we were responsive to what teachers were telling us they wanted. They thought that maybe uh, the standard was a little bit too broad and too vague, and so we added some qualifiers there, a little bit of a greater description, so that they would know um, with greater clarity what they would need. But I think it was just really great that we sought out diligently what teachers are saying. They wanted to make it more meaningful and more clear for them. Um, I'm so sorry. And then, um, in addition to that clarity provided in the standards, we also had a lot of teachers email us about, or respond to surveys about standard three. Um, there was some perceived bias in the language of the former document, and so we addressed that with some new language. So societies are shaped by identities, beliefs, and practices of individuals and groups is the new language that seemed to satisfy some of those perceived concerns. Um, and so we also have that additional clarity there as to what that would need to keep the consistency of the standards piece. Um, then, for the comparisons of the benchmarks, we've kept the standard really largely the same, with the benchmarks being one point three through one point four. But you will see that we've made the language a little bit more concise and a little bit more clear. That will really help for assessment purposes. Um, but in addition, we made sure that the language was consistent all throughout the document. So for example, if the one point one says a student's going to recognize and evaluate, then we made sure two point one used that language, three point one, four point one, and five point one. So that way, there's really great consistency across them, which all of my teachers are saying, thank you, thank you, because that makes the assessment piece so much easier. So we're very grateful for that. Okay. And so in an effort to respond to the board's initiatives and to the world that's changing around us, we added a few elements of effective instruction to include that civic engagement piece. Of course, really promoting kids getting involved and being active members of their society even before voting age. And then obviously, when that comes around, we want them to be very involved in their community in that way. Also employing some culturally relevant instruction to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our learners wherever they're at. Some digital literacy is obviously becoming the primary mode of communication, and we make sure students can digest that correctly. And the social emotional learning and character development, we don't want, we want to make a purposeful addition there to say that that's a part of what we do in social studies as well. So in the suggested scope and sequence, basically what we found is that the elementary teachers aren't getting maybe as much time in social studies as they would hope to have. So we were trying to be responsive to what they were saying their realities were. So we provided this scope and sequence to have that focus content suggested. We found that from teachers were telling us that they don't know the difference between what first grade maybe should be doing and second grade, and so we tried to add that clarity there. And then in addition, instead of putting them responsible for all five standards, we would say that in first grade, we're going to focus on rights and responsibilities, and that's really going to be your area of focus and the lens by which you would teach all of that first grade curriculum. But this was really done to recognize that many districts just limit the amount of social studies instruction, and so we really wanted to respond to that in a really practical way. However, you will notice that this is K through 4 where we make this standard suggestion about the one that should be focused on, but then starting in grade 5 through 12, we're going to say all of the standards then would need to be met in each of those grades. Okay, and then we added this infographic, which kind of gets at the question you had earlier about how teachers can use the standards to create their unit design. This framework really is going to help them do exactly that. So for even first-year teachers and even veteran teachers, they can use this framework, but it's really designed to be a planning tool, and it provides this framework for teachers to use to really create these high-level lessons and units. I am personally really proud of this piece because it gets students doing the authentic work of social studies. It's reminding teachers to start with their standards, selecting that content that's really critical, and engaging them with the questions, and evoking that inquiry, which is what we want students to do, and then using all of those sources, the multiple sources from multiple perspectives and multiple modes, to really be able to generate some questions that they can answer. But we want those tasks to be aligned with the benchmarks, which we're excited about, especially with the assessment work that's going on right now. But curating those sources that are meaningful, that purposeful integration of reading and writing, social studies teachers, our literacy teachers too. And so just purposefully highlighting that and applying those best practices that are focusing on the competencies. So this document, it indicated there was like 200 pages. A huge overwhelming chunk of that is these appendices that goes beyond what the standards are. So we have the standards, and then in these appendices, I think these are really great because they're not intended to serve as a school curriculum. However, it can certainly provide a framework for districts that might need some assistance or for teachers who might be new to the content and they don't necessarily know what to expect to teach in a course like that. So in the elementary grades, we're looking at the integration of the four disciplines within the social studies, history, government, geography, and economics. And then the secondary courses, you can see, are still the same scope and sequence from before. But we basically wanted to include these at all of these different grade levels to equip districts that might need that guidance. But each appendix does start with the standards and the benchmarks, an outline of the big ideas and concepts with some sample compelling questions to drive their instruction, and then list those competencies in order to build those discipline-specific skills. One of the things I do want to add here is that you'll notice under where it says "electives", we have three samples there. That list of electives could be endless if you look at what every district across the entire state is doing, and we're mindful that we can't possibly write a sample curriculum for all, however many that would be. I mean, in my district alone, we have like 15. So we chose the ones that we thought were the most representative in the most number of districts to serve as our exemplars there. Okay, and the 2020 appendices, as you can see in the slide, or from the previous slide, there was that course outline containing a number of elements such as people, places, ideas, et cetera. But feedback from the field, from the teachers and districts, indicated that they felt some kind of need to cover all of that stuff that was in there. So some of that content was treated like a checklist, and we really wanted to eliminate that kind of thinking. And so we've reduced the amount of information that was in those particular outlines and instead have these larger ideas, concepts, and compelling questions that will hopefully drive student inquiry. And we also added verbiage stating that the outline should be added to or amended in ways that fits the instructional needs of students in individual districts.
Dawn?
I do want to point out one thing that we omitted from the presentation, that we actually added a pre-K social studies to the standards document that is full of competencies for pre-K education as well, so.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gratified to see geography. I guess when I was young and I liked geography bees and quizzes and things. So do we have hard rubrics for like remembering the state capitals and postal abbreviations and things like that at certain grades? Do we actually make kids remember certain lists of things anymore?
That would be curriculum, which would surely be the purview of the educator and the district, but it's not something that we would mandate from the state.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions, board members? Ann Mall?
Thank you, and I appreciate you allowing my friend in Kansas City to sit in on the committee. But it's just an issue I had with another standards committee we had before too, that outside citizens weren't automatically being included on our standards committees, and I think they should, because I probably got more emails about these standards than any, like, "Are we encouraging kids to vote?" Because they don't vote, and I want to make sure that gets in there. And the geography thing came up, because in one lady's school, she goes, "They don't teach geography till 7th grade." Wow. So, but I think we should have more noneducators on these committees, and I appreciate you letting him participate.
Thank you. Again, curriculum is part of what the schools do, but our standards document, if you look all the way from kindergarten all the way through 5th grade, there is an integrated geography section in each of those grades. All you have to do is think about the marginalization that's taken place of history and science in the elementary schools over the last decade, to see that schools are really crushed for time, and they tend to figure out what the teacher likes or what they want to do, and that's what they end up doing as curriculum. So bringing attention to the fact that they need more geography is a great thing for local school districts.
Other questions? And I think when you look in the elementary school, there's lots of opportunity in both history and science for reading, different kinds of readings. So there really should be some nice ways to integrate both of those curriculums into different kinds of readings that the kids are doing. So, okay, well, we really appreciate your work. Thank you for coming over from Olathe today. I'm assuming the roads will be somewhat clear going back. So, but we appreciate it, and then we will have this as an action item next month.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is the policy, State Policy Committee. This is, Dina chaired this committee, and she's going to go over a few items here. And this begins in your agenda on page 205, so if you want to kind of follow along, I'm sure she'll probably walk us through this. So, Dina?
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is to thank my committee, Ann Mall and Jean Clifford. They were excellent members and helped, helped me a great deal anyway. And Mark, thank you for being a part of it. We discovered in the process of looking through everything, we found a statement that we wanted to know a little bit more about, and it had a reference to a statute. So we tried to look up the statute, and it didn't exist anymore. We did find, we did find the statute, the statement in another statute with a different number, which made us wonder if there were others that had been changed as far as the numbers were concerned. And Mark helped us discover that there were several sites in our policy that the statutes had been renumbered. So we have renumbered a number of the statutes. So as you go through, and I'd like to also thank Peggy for reorganizing all of this and coming up with using our logo and so on. It looks very professional. So thank you very much. On the 2I page, there are some statutes that are referenced, and the number has been changed. So we changed them in the policies. The next... Find the next page that is where there is a change or a comment. The blue comments just simply tell you kind of explain what we, what our thought process was. On page 8, we did strike the last sentence under Commissioner, which would be E, the policy type under governance process. And under E Commissioner, we struck the reference there to evaluation and placed it under the category that has to do with evaluations. And on page 9, under the Secretary, that is a different statute number. The statute content didn't change, just the number. And the attorney, the reference to the attorney, that statute also changed. And then under E, which is all evaluations, we struck Secretary and Attorney and simply said it was all positions attached to the State Board. And we indicated that the Commissioner would receive a formal cumulative evaluation, not more than six months after he or she is appointed. Thereafter, a formal cumulative evaluation of the Commissioner shall be performed annually by the State Board. And the Board Attorney, also, we added the first evaluation would be within six months of hiring, because everyone else in our hire has that reference, but the attorney, for some reason, was only yearly. And it didn't speak to when they would be first hired. And then on page 14, under Governance Policy or Process, 1, number 1, Meetings. A, that's another statutory reference that needed to be, the number needed to be changed. And B, it referenced the same statute, and that's the reason that one is also changed. Page 17, and this is also under Meetings, Records, G, Records and Minutes, there's the statute changes there as well. On 1, that is 72-250, and G2, the statute is 72-251. And on page 19, when we're talking about citizens' form, there was no indication of how many copies should be available. So we added that component so that recognizing other people don't necessarily see our policies, but we do, and people do ask us what they should do. So this gives us a little bit more specificity about how many copies need to be provided. And 22, under Board Staff Linkage, page 23, one of the things we discovered in our search with statutes was that the statute says we will appoint the Assistant Commissioners. And before the statement said the qualifications or method of selection should not be, shouldn't be established without consulting the State Board. When something like that is in law, we probably hold ourselves open if we don't follow through with the appointment from a disgruntled individual who might have been seeking an Assistant Commissioner or Deputy Commissioner position. And we want to make sure we're following the law. So we do, under our consent calendar, actually approve the appointment of many of staff members. We don't necessarily know who they are, but we do know that they've been hired. So it may not be that far-reaching what of a change. And I would assume we would have some knowledge of who that person would be anyway. Janet maybe has experienced it, but I've, in the time I've been on the board, I've not experienced the... experienced the hiring of an Assistant Commissioner. So, they've all been in place, so. So, anyway, that's the reason for that change. And I should have gotten more yellow. Oh, one other thing on that same page. We added yesterday, behind Assistant Commissioners, a parenthesis that, with Deputy Commissioners to make certain that we all know that is who we're talking about. And on page 29, under Emergency Executive Succession, the statute referenced executives. So, we, to make sure everyone knows, we're talking about Deputy Commissioners, we put that in parenthesis. Under the Guidelines Section, A Legal Basis, page two, number one, that's another statute On page four, we made certain that our change about the Legislative Liaison, Liaisons was change, that statement referenced the Assistant Legislative Liaison. So, we just simply said we would allocate three-quarters of an additional share after January 1st to each of the two Legislative Liaisons. On page nine, under Governing Law, number one, again, there's a statute change. The number is changed. And that statute appears in more than one sentence in number one. And by the way, those, I should have said that earlier, but they're redlined. The red ones are the changes. And on page 17, the Guidelines having to do with Charter School Procedures, again, those On page 22, we struck the initial evaluations. This has to do with conducting annual evaluations of Commissioner, Board Attorney, and Board Secretary. And we just struck the initial evaluations are to be conducted within six months of hire and annually thereafter because that's in our policy. And we cited the policy number and the letter and number that you find it on, which is instead of 2002, it's 1007E1. And we indicated that Policy 1007 references all three positions and not only the Commissioner. So, any questions? Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the initial, on the additional quarter travel allocation, how did that come to be?
It was voted on in January of last year, I believe.
Okay, I apologize for not remembering that. Thank you.
Other questions? Janet?
I just want to compliment the committee. It's amazing to me how you always, your fresh eyes see new things, you know, and I, and I compliment you all for what you've done because I know this can be rather boring, but it is necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I am amazed we found things because you all had done such a great job. We didn't think we'd find anything, but, oh my. It took us several days of meeting even to find all these things, so.
Well, thanks to.
Again, thank you all for your patience with us. And thanks to the committee and Mark and to Peggy for all of their hard work.
Yeah, thank you to everybody who worked on this. A lot of good detail work, particularly finding the statutes that had changed, and that's important to have that in there. So, thank you. This is a received item today, so we will vote on it next month when it comes back to us in March. Okay, right.
It's amazing, March is almost here.
Yes, it is. Okay, we're going to move to the reports, committee reports. We do have, first, the Legislative Liaison. So, Jim or Deena?
Well, we've been very busy. As a matter of fact, there was a hearing this morning on the vaping bill. And so, we, since we had other things to do at nine o'clock this morning, we did submit jointly written testimony supporting the bill with a caveat, and that is that the bill exempts menthol flavoring. And so, we indicated that even though we support the bill, we also support stronger measures, which was consistent with our legislative platform, because we said that in our legislative platform. So, so we presented that this morning, even though we weren't there. And so, maybe we'll find out later how that, how that went. I did a presentation for the Stop Arm, the Bus Stop Arm Committee, and was a little bit alarmed at the questions that were asked. I didn't see a much, you know, we have a thousand kids, a thousand passes a day, and it appeared to me that there wasn't enthusiasm for doing something about that that I had hoped. I was visiting with our transportation person this morning, and there was a death in Wisconsin just very recently. And so, after, when I get someplace, I intend to send that article to all members of that committee so that they can be aware of the fact when we talk about this, this is a tragedy waiting to happen, that in some, in Wisconsin, it's no longer waiting to happen. Last year in Indiana, it's no longer waiting to happen. This afternoon, I am going to do a dyslexia briefing at Senate Ed. And tomorrow, the, the Department Budget comes up and the, the specific things that, that we're going to recommend, of course, we support the, the Department Budget, but specifically the recommendation for a dyslexia coordinator that was proffered by the Dyslexia Task Force. And I have two members of the Dyslexia Task Force, one of which is Senator Masterson, who will be there to support that position. It's going to be, I, I just talked to them today. It's, there's a lot of people presenting, and it's a very short period of time, so you know, we'll have a few seconds to do that, but we want to make sure that, that they understand that. And I appreciate both Senator Masterson and Jamie Callahan, who's the Special Services Director at Auburn Washburn, and a member of the committee, that will be there to do that. And I'll back, I'll be there for backup. And so, that's sort of where we are right now. Deena, I'll just pass off to you.
Well, I, while Jim's wife was recuperating last week, I spent several days, except for Wednesday, when the Chiefs' celebration was, and everybody vacated the Capitol, basically. So, yeah, for some reason, they thought that was important. So, and it was either that or it was a day away from the Capitol that they could go home and do what they normally are involved in. But anyway, I spent several days speaking, working with legislators on the Education Committees and also on, and that's both House and Senate, and also the K-12 Budget Committee. And because Wednesday kind of messed, messed up my schedule, I have them scheduled for this afternoon and for tomorrow. So, I will be visiting with many of those legislators and also sharing with, with them my or our list of priorities. And during the time that Jim was, was gone, I send him emails and say, I'm going to do, share written testimony on this bill and that bill. And so, he knew what I was up to, but, and we did share on the vaping bill. We both have our names on that written policy. So, anyway, it's, it's a work in progress. Hopefully, it's progress, not just process.
Hopefully, right. Well, thanks both to Jim and Deena for your work over across the street. Appreciate it. And the Policy Committee's already reported, so we'll have their information back next month. Communications Committee, Jim McNeese and Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank Jim and Deena for their quality work with the Legislature in terms of communication. I think back to six, seven years ago, and we didn't have near the communication capacity that we do today, and it's based on your guys' efforts. So, thank you very much. With that, one of the things Communications Team has done in the past is hosted a dinner with legislators from the Education Committees in both the House and the Senate, and we don't have one of those planned this year for a couple of reasons. If you want to know all the reasons, come and see me, but we just thought it would be a good time to back off a little this year, you know, in consultation with Deena and Jim and, and Ben and Commissioner and Kathy, we just kind of looked at it and said, maybe we'll do one in the middle, see what lay of the land is. You don't have to keep doing things year in, year in and year out just because we, we do them. So, we'd love to have your information. What I just distributed to you is kind of a Communication Strategic Plan Draft for 2020. You can take a look at it and get back to Ben or I and let us know what you think. But one thing that's not on there that was a big event for us last year was our trip to Western Kansas, you know, and I would suggest that if following the trips to Southeast and Central, we went to West, and I would suggest that we look at going out to the Far West, out to Western Kansas. Gene, once again, the Northwest section, you know, they could feel a little attention and love, and, and we certainly have a lot of great folks out there working, and we need to get out there and see them. So, I think we'll be putting that together unless you feel like we don't want to do that, the pleasure of the Board in terms of doing that.
Timeframe, Jim, are we talking like next September, October, in that timeframe?
Yeah, after the, after the summer, yeah. Basically, doing, a typical format is that we meet, obviously, with schools and redesign schools especially. We look for, for them, and we meet with superintendents. We meet, you know, with the Boards, Board Representatives and superintendents and business. So, we'll see what we can set up, you know, and move from there. So, we'll work with the Commissioner and others to make sure, and the, the superintendents in that area to make it a time that's going to benefit all. Yes?
I just wonder if we might also consider maybe some of the technical colleges.
Well, actually, that did come up, the Technical Colleges, as well as Fort Hays, you know, having them involved as well, you know.
That'd be great.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. Good suggestion. Sorry I left that out, you know. If there's anything that you'd like to get back to Ben or I on, that'd be great. There's lots of things to do, a lot of questions, you know. We, we did the court about the postcards a number of years ago and we, for several years, and at that time, they were good and, you know, and did a great job of keeping our, our name and our issues in front. I would encourage you to take our legislative agenda. I've brought it to superintendents and boards, and it's been widely and very enthusiastically received. That document does a lot to define who we are and where, what our vision is, as much as, obviously, our, our vision and redesign and, and such. So, thanks, I want to thank you all for doing that. That really gave us a, a focus and point, a kind of a, a direction that people and the field appreciate very much, has been my feedback.
Yes, Jim Porter.
One thing I forgot that I need to add, on the 26th, you know, we passed a resolution supporting Public Education Week, and on Wednesday of that week, there are going to be a number of presentations or booths type thing in the Capitol Rotunda from public school groups, and we're working with KSB, USA, NEA, a bunch of other organizations. And one of the, one of the groups that are going to be there, there are going to be several redesigned schools that are going to be part of those presentations. And so, if you happen to be here on the 26th, from about nine o'clock to about three or thirty, thirty or so, there are going to be a number of students in the Rotunda, and so we might want to stop by and, and encourage them.
Great, thank you.
Very good, good to know. Thank you very much. Jim and Ben, thank you for your information for us. We appreciate your work. Individual reports, just a reminder, are in your meeting folders, so take a look at those as far as individual reports. And, and Mark?
Thank you. I know we get a lot of individual reports. I hope you'll take a look at mine. We had the KACCTE meeting this month, but also, I didn't see many of us at the CTE Conference. And the gal, who's the president of Wichita Tech.
Sheri.
Yeah, Sheri Utash made some amazing presentations. I just made a few notes about it, but that might be a good field trip too because they're doing some, I mean, we've already been there, but they're doing cool stuff. Anyway, I cannot go back to the office without paying proper recognition to Black History Month because Ms. Campbell will let me know that I let that opportunity slip by, but I wanted to do it anyway. So, I thought I would focus on Langston Hughes, who was actually born in Joplin, but we claim him because he was raised for the most part of his life in Lawrence. And he began his career of poetry and writing in high school. Here's a funny thing he wrote. He goes, "He began writing experiments when he was young in grammar school." He stated that in retrospect, he thought it was because of the stereotype about African-Americans having rhythm. He said, "He was a victim of stereotype. There are only two of us Negro kids in the whole class, and our English teacher was always stressing the importance of rhythm and poetry. Well, everyone knows, except us, that all Negroes have rhythm, so they elected me the class poet." So, and he wrote his first poems in high school, but I thought I would share a short one, "I Too Sing America" by Langston Hughes. "I Too Sing America. I am the darker brother. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes, but I laugh and eat well and grow strong. Tomorrow, I'll be at the table when company comes. Nobody will dare..." Tomorrow, I'll be at the table when company comes. Nobody will dare say to me, 'Eat in the kitchen then.' Besides, they'll see how beautiful I am and be ashamed. I too am America."
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing that to our attention. It's interesting to know that I didn't know Langston Hughes spent most of his growing up time in Lawrence. So, it's nice to know, along with Gordon Parks and his connection to the state of Kansas. So, very good. Thank you very much. Board Attorney Report.
A board member asked a question of me about the impact that a Supreme Court case that was argued in January might have in Kansas. And so, it allowed me to to take a look at that case and and make some consideration about how it maybe applies to Kansas. One thing I'm not is is a Supreme Court scholar, so I dug into this a little bit. I sent you an email this morning with more detail, but I'd like to kind of summarize some of my conclusions or at least the answer that the board member raised. So, the question is whether or not the Espinoza versus Montana Department of Revenue case would have an impact on the Kansas Tax Credit Scholarship Program. And the application of that case depends on the knowledge or understanding of the Blaine Amendment in the Kansas Constitution and and what ultimately the U.S. Supreme Court decides when it is expected to issue its decision and written opinion in June of this summer. The Blaine Amendment is named after a failed federal constitutional amendment introduced in Congress by Senator James Blaine of Maine in 1875. The Blaine Amendment sought the amendment of the U.S. Constitution to prohibit state governments from, among other things, funding religious schools with public money. Although the amendment did fail, many states have added provisions to their constitutions that accomplish what Congressman Blaine could not do. And so, with that backdrop as to what the Blaine Amendment is, there are 38, approximately 38 states that have one, have a different iteration of a Blaine Amendment. Kansas does have in its state constitution a version of the Blaine Amendment, and the Blaine Amendment coming from the Kansas Constitution says that no religious sect or sects shall control any part of the public educational funds. And that's from the Constitution, Article 6, Section 6C. So, if you take that back to the entire issue of the the case that was that was argued before the U.S. Supreme Court on January 22 of this year, that case heard arguments on a Montana tax credit for scholarships that went to religious schools. And so, this board member was curious as to whether or not that outcome might impact how Kansas Tax Credit Program or any similar funding for religious or private schools might be impacted by this by this particular case. It's it's difficult to tell because the Montana Tax Credit Scholarship to Religious Schools directly is directly analyzing the language of the Blaine Amendment in the state of Montana. And I read to you the very narrow, very specific Blaine Amendment in the Kansas Constitution, but Montana had a has a much broader Blaine Amendment, and their state constitution is explicit outlawing, quote, "any direct or indirect appropriation of payment for any public fund or monies," and goes on, "for any sectarian purpose or to aid any school, church, school, academic, seminary, college, university, or other literary or scientific institution controlled in whole or in part by any church, sect, or denomination." So, the Montana state constitution is very broad. The Kansas constitution on that particular issue is very narrow. And the U.S. Supreme Court would be analyzing a number of legal principles, including the division between church and state, the issues related to this particular constitutional provision, equal protection, and a number of other constitutional law theories and ways to 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 look at at that particular case that has elevated to the to the U.S. Supreme Court. However, there's a lot of education attorneys and and people who watch education cases in front of the U.S. Supreme Court have watched are watching this because of Secretary DeVos's interest in 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 private funding and different, you know, different initiatives that have come out of Washington, D.C. And I gave a little, some excerpts, those were not mine, but I've sanitized them a little bit and tried not to be too partisan on the quotations that I put in there, coming from some national publications, including the National School Board Association, where they've described kind of the give and take or the various policy arguments, as well as the different views of the U.S. Supreme Court justices. And there's some prediction that they might find that that find that that the the tax credit law in Montana is not unconstitutional, which might have a ripple effect in other states. And so, it's it's challenging to provide any input on that because our state Supreme or our state constitution is very narrow. It could be argued that that the U.S. Supreme Court might take it and only apply it to that very limited situation, or the U.S. Supreme Court might run with it and provide some much broader and broader reaching implications and decisions about the use of public funds or, you know, the distinction between church and state as it relates to whether it's vouchers or tax credit programs. And so, it's a it's an interesting question and one that I don't have a good answer for in terms of where it might go, but I but we'll certainly can stay tuned and see what the outcome of the case is when those decisions are reported in June, when the Supreme Court comes out with its written opinions. There are a couple of provisions that that we, you know, we talk about the education article frequently when we discussing, you know, school funding. We don't really focus much on this Blaine Amendment because it's not come up in Kansas law too often. And then, there's another provision that I cited from our Kansas Constitution related to compelled support clause, which reads, "Nor shall any person be compelled to attend or support any form of worship." And so, the the publications that are out there that talk about the the various either tax credit or voucher programs or school choice options in the state of Kansas, look at those particular Kansas provisions of the Kansas Constitution. And so, this Espinoza case will be a good opportunity, I guess, to for for whether it's legislators or legal challenges to various state private programs based on how how this comes out by the Supreme Court.
Thank you, Mark. That's very interesting to hear the feedback and be good one for us to keep an eye and an ear out for you. You say it's so it's argued in January, should be out by June sometime?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll look for forward to an update for that. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, request for future, Steve?
If I might, I was privileged to represent the Kansas Volunteer Commission, represent the board through the KBC last week on Legislative Day and met with several legislators. And I promised Jeff Longbine that I would bring this up. Senator Longbine wanted to know why, in his view, and I apologize, I've not done the research, and I guess I'm going to ask for someone else to do some work that I really don't have time to do, and I apologize for that. But as I understand it, there was a rule or some legislation roughly three years ago where our good friends across the street passed something that said that the spouses of folks who who transferred here for military work, say at Fort Riley, if they had an out-of-state license, that they would get reciprocity in our state. And he expressed frustration that this hasn't come to be. And I said that I would bring this up, that I would bring this to the board. Again, I apologize that I haven't done any legwork. I don't know which statute to cite. I don't know the exact timeframe. But if I understand Senator Longbine correctly, it was roughly three years ago, and it was targeted to the spouses of those who came to Kansas from out of state to serve in military capacities.
I just looked at Randy, and he kind of acted like he was unfamiliar with that. I think, wasn't there something this year?
There's a self.
Yeah, so Randy will look into it and get some information in Friday notes.
Thank you very much.
Uh huh, you bet. Okay, request for future agenda items, and I know Jim Porter has one or two.
Yeah, the Professional Standards Board for the last, ever since I've been there, has been talking about micro credentials. And as an alternative, as an alternative, not not as an alternative, but as another way for possible relicensor or another way to to give individualized and productive professional development. And so, at the last board meeting, at the last professional development, at the last Professional Standards Board meeting, which was Monday, I requested that they bring us up to date on that issue, and I'm requesting that as soon as possible. And then, hopefully, after we're to the process where we may be making recommendations, I would say by the fall, we're making recommendations. But I request that that be put on our agenda and have a presentation on where we are with micro credentials next month, if possible.
So, you'd like the agenda item to be on fairly soon, even though Professional Standards Boards won't get their thing until the start of the next academic year?
It would be sort of an update where we are and then follow up after after a while with 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 actually specific recommendations to make sure that we're sort of, sort of, we need to be aware of what's going on.
Did you have anything else to include? Agenda items? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Ben, did you have, you wanted to second that?
I second Jim wholeheartedly. That was exactly what I was going to bring up.
Okay, all right, very good. Other future agenda items? Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, just a couple of additional things to kind of review real quickly. First of all, those of you that were able to attend the Kansas of the Year banquet that honored Dale Dennis, and then there was another lady there, Nicole Gallion from Sterling. And I just want to thank you that were able able to attend. It was quite a wonderful event, really very, very nice. And we certainly were all there to support Dale and, you know, the honor that he has and the work that he's done. It was quite a wonderful evening. Lots of people from the department, lots of other folks there, supporting Dale. It was a very, very nice evening, and I had not been to one of those before, and it was a very enjoyable evening. They did a nice job of honoring our two honorees, and we are certainly proud to have Dale as representing the work, as he said, "For all the kids of Kansas," which is what he does. He works hard for the kids of Kansas. Just real quickly, Jean and I on Monday attended the Coordinating Council with KABOR, and Randy's talked a little bit about it. We had a good beginning session, and I think what we'll be doing is probably trying to kind of narrow our focus and worked pretty strategically on maybe one, at the most, maybe two items a year. And so, we'll be bringing you information as we move along. I think there's a lot of interest between KABOR and then the Kansas Chamber was there also of a lot of interest to have some in-depth work on a small number of items so we can begin to make some progress and get some things to you. That information will also probably dovetail with some of the work we're doing on the Governor's Education Council. That's a rather large committee, and we're a small committee, so hopefully, we can get some work done and kind of move forward on some of those things. Randy, you want to add anything to that? Jean, you know, anything you'd like to add?
No, I just thought it was a very productive meeting, and I think that we can really make some progress in that post-secondary success that we're looking for.
One of the things we did spend a good amount of time talking about is those kids. And I think, as Randy alluded to yesterday, maybe talk more about the kids from 16 to 20, which are basically our kids in junior and senior year, and those kids, the first two years at whatever kind of post-secondary work they do. And, you know, do we maybe, is it maybe time between our two big institutions to start looking at that a little differently, you know, and how those kids are prepared? You know, I think, as we all certainly believe, the high school graduation is good. It's a good thing, but it's not enough. They need something else beyond that in order to be prepared and doing good work out for themselves and for in Kansas. So, you know, that was something that I think, I think that's probably going to be a real focus area for us as we move forward and kind of looking at those, that age group and what can we do with both institutions to kind of support that work. So, had a great first meeting on that, and we're meeting again in sometime. I don't remember when. Randy sent me the meeting. I think we'll be meeting quarterly. Just a reminder for you to check your meeting folders. Peggy did put together a summary in there from the CT SO luncheon from the meeting. You know, we had to split that day. Some of us went to the superintendent luncheon, and some went with the kids. You guys had a good time, I'm sure. We did too. But, and so, summary of some of the student responses from there. I don't know if anybody who went, Janet, you kind of, you were over there. So, there's a summary of those responses. And we may want to bring that to the board sometime and just visit a little bit about it. But you might review that, and then we may have some additional conversation. There's also a list of upcoming events in there, so you might want to refer to that, those of you that are planning your calendar as you move along and and look at that. Our next meeting is March 10th and 11th, and I think as we're getting into March, spring breaks for schools and universities are all over the place in March now. They used to be fairly consistent, and they're not any longer. So, we'll, hopefully, when people are on spring break, they're going to want to come to the State Board meeting. That's hopefully what they're going to want to do. Yes, we do need to be ready. We will be getting the action items on the history government standards that we went over today. The Policy Committee updates will also be. And then, some students from the School for the Deaf are going to be serving as pages, and they're going to pop over and see us too. So, that'll be a great opportunity to visit with them a little bit about how their their civic work went over at the Capitol. And then, we're also going to be back to get some recommendations from the Vaping Task Force Group. So, they'll be back, I think, in March.
Yeah, our meeting's February 24th, Monday, and they're working on cessation, mental health facilities in the area where they can get, parents can get help to their child, and disciplinary actions, like first offense, second offense, third offense. And KSAB is working on trying to get the policy a little aligned with what kind of what we we feel is, same same policy is.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michelle. And School Mental Health Advisory Council is tomorrow. We've sent an email out to, as I'm sitting there looking at the snow still coming down. I think we're probably over that trace that they said already. But but we sent an email that folks, if they wanted to participate via Zoom, they could do that tomorrow. So, we're still going to have our meeting, but it may be via Zoom. One of the things that we'll really be spending our time on, the Bullying Task Force, that report has now gone to School Mental Health Advisory Council. So, while we looked at the report in December, we had took our initial look at it tomorrow. Tomorrow, we're really going to begin to break it down. And I think probably what we'll also be doing is establishing a smaller subcommittee of our group that's going to be meeting in the off months where we meet and bring, so we can move things along a little more quickly, because we really only meet about every other month, and sometimes it's every third month, especially when you get in, we get into summer. So, we're going to be having that smaller subcommittee that will meet in March, so we'll have some information to follow up with. so we'll have some, uh, in, information to follow up with, uh, the bigger committee in February, um, and get, get information, um, back to you. As you know, uh, the School Mental Health Advisory Council is just that, is an advisory board for us, so they'll be bringing information. I, um, probably, maybe we'll have at least a report in April, but maybe not necessarily any recommendations by that point in time, but that's kind of where that group is at this point in time. So, uh, feel like we're making some progress there as we will be taking on that, uh, work from the Bullying Task Force. Okay, um, I think we're set for today, and the Commissioner has an announcement.
So, just so that you know, I'm tracking some weather-related things. There was a, uh, bus accident, Anne, in the Auburn-Washburn School District, uh, this morning, but doesn't look like, um, it involved a school bus, but there was actually two cars that collided in front of the school bus. But there was, uh, a wreck on the turnpike south of Emporia, uh, where a bus actually, I'm not sure it was hit or, or went off the road, but actually turned over on its side. Uh, the report, it's a, it's from Park Elementary in Wichita, so they were traveling somewhere. Uh, and the latest, uh, as of forty-four minutes ago is that there are seventeen young people hurt. I don't think critically, but I'll try to, you know, keep you apprised, but it looks like the roads are, as Kathy said, much worse than were originally projected for this time of day, so just wanted you to be aware of that.
So, then the other thing to say is, let's be careful out there. I know, uh, most of you are heading home, few of you are staying, uh, let's drive careful. As I look back there by Adalia, and I see the snow still coming out, coming down pretty good. Okay, so I think for the good of the order, uh, we are adjourned for our February meeting. Thank you very much.